Building Committee of November eighth, two thousand twelve. Will the minute taker please call the roll?
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Coles. Alderman Shaki.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Lazara. Alderman Woods.
Here.
I declare a quorum. I make a motion to approve minutes dated September twenty seven, two thousand twelve. Is there a second?
Second.
Anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is report and recommendation on the use of municipal right-of-way. And with that, I'll hand this over to Mr. Forrest to take us through.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'll make a few comments, and then I believe the city attorney is going to make some comments on this as well. Historically, the city of Wooddale has allowed on limited occasions residents to use and install, for example, lawn irrigation sprinkler systems in the city right-of-way with the use of a license agreement. We've also, in some areas, allowed limited parking on part of the city right-of-ways. We've allowed businesses to develop some additional parking if they were short on parking, again, with the license agreement with that business owner, and they, of course, are responsible for installing the paving and maintaining it and returning the right-of-way into the pre-existing condition, once they would close the business or move away, or the license agreement would expire. What we've been encountering over the last several years in the industrial park is, in two thousand and nine, there was a company up in the industrial park who needed more space. They were actually, they're a very large company, they were contemplating moving out of Wooddale and relocating. Staff worked with them. We managed to find them another building close enough, and the building had previously been used for a similar use, where they ended up purchasing that building, staying in the city, but they needed to connect those buildings with some fiber optic cables to enable them to keep operating. They came to the city. We did give them a license agreement at that point, since it was one private company that owned both buildings, and they were basically just interconnecting the two buildings, we did give them a license agreement. We did not charge them any fees. Since that time, in two thousand and eleven, we had a company come to us that wanted to install fiber optic cables in the city right-of-ways. But the thing that makes this a little different is this is going to be a company that was going to generate revenues from the use of those, from the installation and use of those cables. So in negotiations with the city attorney, we did come up with a ten-year lease with them, and we charged them a set fee for the use of the city right-of-ways, for the installation of their fiber optic. This year, we had another company come in, same type of a user. They were going to be installing these fiber optic lines to provide service, and it was going to be a, you know, revenue generating stream. So, again, we used the same lease agreement and then also charged them a fee. Staff's been approached recently by a third company that wants to install fiber optics in the city right-of-way. And the thing that makes this one a little bit different is they're proposing to install quite a bit less lineal footage. So, again, in discussions with the city attorney, it seems like, at this point, Wooddale has never really had a set fee structure for this type of, for these type of installations and a real standardized license agreement or lease agreement that we're going to use with these companies. That's, the city attorney has put something together tonight. And bottom line is, it's time for us to come up with a policy and some sort of a set fee schedule, be it a tiered schedule, fee schedule, or a lineal footage schedule, whatever we decide is going to be the best for the city. It's time. So...
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, as Mr. Forrest indicated, there is a, this is something that's common. I think we're going to see more of that. And the thought was, there should be some uniformity, so one of the providers doesn't say, well, you treat it someone differently. There really isn't a, 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 a sort of a template standardized format where you do a linear feat or something, because they're providing slightly different. Some of them are in here connecting their own buildings, and they want, they have to go on public right-of-way for that purpose. Some of them are actually providing services to their customers, so they're generating profit and charging those customers. So they are, there's some slight differences. There's also the Telecommunications Act, if you recall. This was the infrastructure maintenance fee that came up where the different municipalities were charging or taxing under the guise of a fee a, some of these telecommunication providers, and that went up to the Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court said, no, you've got to, there's got to, it's got to be called a tax, and there has to be some uniformity to it. So what we're looking to do is saying, there should be some, and we want direction from the council, there should be some uniformity to it, so if a similarly situated provider comes in, and if it's somebody who's providing a fiber optic cable, for example, to interconnect their own buildings, and they have to go on city right-of-way, you know, that might be one category, if you will. If there's a, somebody who's coming in and they're going to offer services to customers, those customers are going to pay, that would be a different category. Some of them may be, you know, simply passing through to get to Itasca, Bensonville, or wherever, and that may be, you know, some consideration given to that. They're always going to restore it. That's always going to be part and parcel of it. But there needs to be some determination as to how you can make it so it's equitable, and there is, it's reasonably related to what the city is providing to them for the benefit of going into that city right-of-way. So, as Mr. Forrest suggested, you know, a lineal feat is one way of calculating. A tiered system is another way of calculating it. And we need to see if there's any consensus or sense from the council as to, you know, any preference there, and we can put together an ordinance and ultimately a code amendment that would specify that, because one of the things that has been asked, now we've got three providers, they've asked, you know, well, where is it in your code that allows you to charge? Now, two of them have kind of done it without much objection. The third one's raising some issues about that. So, you know, to protect the interest of the city and, you know, so that the taxpayers aren't burdened by that, there has to be some type of a license, you know, issue and some type of a license fee established.
Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Forrest, do we know what most other communities are doing? Are they doing the lineal feat or one-time, or are we not there yet in pulling other communities?
I sent out an email blast to all the communities that are members of the Suburban Building Officials Council. I've only received one reply back, so I expect to get some more. I would be curious to see what other communities do, yet at the same time, we've kind of set a precedent here with some of the companies that we have, so... Depending on what the other communities say, maybe we'll set the precedent for them.
Right, exactly. And if we're going to go with a dollar amount, would you say twenty thousand is the, if we don't go the lineal fee, if we do flat fee, would you say twenty thousand is the way to go?
Well, the two existing contracts we have are for twenty thousand each per year. And their lineal footage kind of falls within that space between one and two miles. This new provider who has applied to put it in, he's going to be installing less than a mile.
Yeah.
So, you know, I see the city attorney's making a...
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, in response to your question, we did contact our colleagues just to see if there was any, if they'd worked on these. And because of the vast differential between, you know, as Ms. Forrest said, there's some of them are a few hundred feet, and some of them are across the entire border from end to end of your town, they're kind of all over the, all over the board. So there wasn't, and there's not many of them, to be honest with you, and there's some because of the, you know, the Telecommunication Tax Act, you know, does this fall within there? And only certain providers fall within the definition of that that would allow you to impose a different type of a fee. So there really isn't a uniformity. There's no cookie cutter thing, because they all are somewhat unique. But we've established a precedent with the two providers that we've got. Those providers are, you know, at twenty thousand, although there is some difference between the linear footage that's being utilized. And that's why, you know, the suggestion was, well, maybe you have a flat twenty thousand dollar license fee, and then if it is a significant, you know, impact to the right-of-way, then you take, you establish a minimum, and that's what the minimum is going to be, and then do a tiered system plus, and you add additional for lineal, additional lineal feat. You'd have to pay per lineal foot or something for the license. So, I mean, that's one option.
Okay, thank you. Did anyone else? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
This is, the ones we have now are how many-year lease?
I believe they're ten-year leases.
Okay, my question is, what happens after ten years?
Mr. Bond?
There would have to be a new lease, and the thought was, we may not be using this technology. So I, that's why they don't wish to go out that far. I mean, you know, we may be using satellite technology, and they don't even need to, you know, encumber our right-of-way. So that's the, sort of the standard duration of these. But that's why it's there without, there's provisions for renewal if we need it to.
Is there provisional in the lease agreement that we could renew? I have one, one other question, if you don't mind. The... And I understand technology, that they have to put fibers on the lines, and I totally understand that. Who's liable? If we have a water main break, which we normally do, who's liable for the damage of these lines if it happens? Are we holding the responsibility if the water main breaks and damages fiber lines? Is the city liable, or are they not?
No, they're, what we're doing is, we're providing them with a license essentially to utilize our property. And they run the risks of whatever might happen within the, within the course of that. So if it's something that's caused by the city, then we're liable for it. If it's not caused by the city, you know, a pipe burst for some reason, if there's someone else responsible, that party would be responsible. But unless the city is directly responsible for that, then any repairs that would be done would be at the cost of the provider for their fiber optic cable. We have to replace the water main or whatever else is in there.
I understand, but we know how we have problems when water main breaks, and I will tell you, I know if it damaged those fiber lines, or any fiber lines, I know it's a major, major bucks. Okay, I know it. And I just don't want the city, that we're granting all these right-of-ways and these, that the city is liable for all those fiber lines, because if we are, that'd better be a heck more than twenty thousand dollars we're charging these people, because we're taking a heck lot of ability on it if we are liable if those lines break in our behalf, or water main breakers. We know what happens on Irving Park Road. We had a major problem when we ruptured a line in Red Cross from Christie's. We had fiber lines there, and, you know, they tried coming after us, a phone company, and that didn't happen, so...
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, the language specifically says, it's further understood and agreed that the licensor, being the city, shall not be liable for any damages or injury to any person or property rising out of or growing out of any incident in construction operation or maintenance of the facilities, that being our road right-of-way, for which licensee is an issue, except if damages or injury are the result of the city's own intentional misconduct or negligence. So there's got to be something that we did and has covered. Yeah, and the reality of it is that they're marked, they're generally protected, because they don't want a disruption or interruption in their services.
Mr. Mayor?
Pat, what if there's something, some project going on in the area where these lines have been installed, and now they're in the way of the project? Who's responsible to move them, them or us?
They would be responsible. There's a provision in there, if during a determined license, that they're required to perform work on the roadway, which requires it to be moved, and necessitates them doing it, that they're going to be responsible for relocating if it's work that we need to have done. So they're going to relocate that to somewhere else, commensurate with, you know, what we've given them, but they would be responsible for relocating that.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah. Just when we're looking at this, developing this fee structure, I know you said there's not a lot of these agreements, but with the development of Elgin-O'Hare-Thorn Dale corridor and all that, and that development, my assumption is there'd probably be a few more of these agreements than we think, so just that we take a a longer look at it and developing the fee structure. That's all.
And in terms of deciding linear versus flat fee, I would agree with some type of initial flat fee, but twenty thousand seems high to me, although I don't know the going rate of it. And then something per lineal foot after that, maybe or something of a mile or less is twenty thousand, and anything above that is per lineal foot, or just some kind of flat fee then per lineal foot is my input on the way to go as we're coming up with a fee structure. Mr. Forrest?
Yeah, that's, and one of the things, as we were just kind of making some notes on that, was I kind of came up with a step system, figuring zero to one mile, which is five thousand two hundred and eighty feet, and then one mile to two miles would be twenty thousand. Because that's, the two that we've already established now fall between that one and two-mile length, and those are each paying twenty thousand. That's twenty thousand a year, Alderman Wesley, just to be sure you understand.
I totally understand.
And then, you know, we could have another tier, you know, two to three miles, and then over three miles would be a flat fee plus a lineal foot or something. So that would be one concept. The other one, I haven't finished totally breaking down the figures, but just some quick calculations. The two agreements that we have, with what they're paying for the lineal footage that they have, averages about two, two dollars and eighty-five cents a lineal foot. So, we'll come back to you with a couple of different, you know, thoughts and see what you feel most comfortable with.
Sure, okay. Alderman Eugene Wesley.
One other question that we talked about, this money that's coming in. Where is this money going to be earmarked, and is it going to the general fund, or is it going to be earmarked for special projects? Capa projects? Where's it going? I mean, I would assume that this money would go in capa projects, I would assume.
Mr. Murmurs?
Maybe you can provide a better answer than I can. You tell me. What do you suggest? Right now, it's going in the general fund.
Okay.
Any other comments on this discussion? Okay, so, Mr. Forrest, did you want any other discussion on this before we close out? Are you pretty good? I think so.
No, I think what we'll do, I'll, hopefully I will get some responses from the email blast that I sent out, the other building officials, and, you know, we'll have something ready for the next committee meeting.
Okay, that sounds good. Okay, then, next item is items for future meetings. Item A is revision assigned code amortization schedule. Any other items that we wish to add? Okay, then, I make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Forrest, for coming up with the different tiered examples.
I'd like to call the Finance and Administration Committee of November eighth, two thousand and twelve, to order the roll call. Please show the same. Now, we have additional Alderman here. I think we can show everybody his here now. The report and recommendation number one is on the treasurer's duties. This started back in August, talking about this, and we didn't come to an agreement. I'm just wondering what staff has come up with now for, I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, provenance of October twenty-fifth. That's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, the treasurer's duties. Mr. Wilson, would you like to come up with some of the ideas you have for the treasurer?
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're correct. This has been kind of off and on again for the last, I think it goes back to, actually, April. So it's been on again and off again for the last seven months. And in trying to formulate the memo for this evening, I went back and I watched the the meetings from those particular dates that are in the timeline there. Just in trying to come up with a consensus of what direction we should likely try to go with this, or where people might want to see it go. And the one phrase, or two phrases that I kept hearing, I lost track after five, I think six of you said it at one point through the various meetings, was "A combination of a second set of eyes or check and balance." So in going through our current business rules and how we've been set up, the finance department has evolved over the last twenty or so years. Taking a specific job duty out of our current business rules and giving it to the treasurer didn't seem to me to fit the second set of eyes or checks and balance approach to it. And in going through some of the other meetings, our friends in Dixon, the DuPage Water Commission, Swank, Bolingbrook, Westmont, Harwood Heights, Bellwood, North Chicago, and the DuPage Housing Authority all came up at various points. And they all had one thing in common when you go through and look at them. Lack of separation of duties and lack of oversight, for various reasons to varying degrees. So, again, looking at our current business rules and the separation of duties we have downstairs, again, pulling those apart didn't seem to be the best to accomplish that goal. So what we came up with predominantly was, on the second page, under duty number four, was the, for lack of a better phrase, the anti-fraud watchdog, where we would have the treasurer come in and look at, and the list that I have here is not an exhaustive list by any means, look at, you know, the monthly financial reports that we send to you. I know a couple of you have asked, well, how do I know that the number that is on this page is actually what's actually on the bank statement? Okay, good question. My, you know, obvious answer right now is, well, because that's what I told you it is, but I understand that that doesn't really get that far in reality. So it'd be a thing where we could have the treasurer come in, and before those reports go out, we could give them the report, give them the bank statements, and have them verify that, to add another level of perhaps comfort. Re-verify the numbers before they go out. You know, some of the things where there were ghost vendors or ghost employees that were getting paid, you know, you know, I don't know, Bob's company, we bought ten widgets from him. Well, Bob's company is really employee X down the hall, who's got his buddy in another department to pay the invoice for him. So stuff like that, going through verifying, you know, W9s, calling the vendors, you know, checking their EINs, things of that nature. And then just random sampling of general ledger accounts to make sure that there's nothing going on in them outside of the list of bills, ghost employees, things like that. So it's certainly not an exhaustive list, but that's kind of the concept that was born out of watching the meetings and looking through our current business rules.
Let me interject something, if I may. Who looks at the, well, let me ask the manager first. How often do we have staff meetings?
Once a week.
And is the municipal lawyer at each one of those meetings?
He is.
In looking through the bills, and this is something that maybe the treasurer might do in the future, in looking at the bills, there's virtually dozens of phone calls to the municipal lawyer during each week. And I'm wondering, can't these be, except for emergencies, kept in one pile and during the staff meeting? Because each phone call costs thirty-four dollars, just to answer the phone over there. And when you're talking about dozens a week, it starts to add up. Can't these, can't staff be told to put their questions in writing or notes or something? And give them to you so that you can go through them at these staff meetings, rather than calling so many times a day? Yes?
I actually heard a rumor that Bond Dixon was going to stop charging us for phone calls. Is that true? No, but in all seriousness, things do come up throughout the week, and a lot of times it is unavoidable. We have instituted policies in the past during budget crunch time that, hey, you know what, no calling the attorney at all, staff meeting only. We can implement that, but right now, it's, to tell you the truth, things come up during the week, and sometimes it's really hard to just wait until Monday to talk to the attorney. We can certainly try to pare back a little, but a lot of times it is unavoidable.
I can understand three or four a day maybe, but, you know, over a dozen a day? And that's what it averages out to, more than a dozen a day. So maybe that's one of the areas that the treasurer can be looking at, not only for that bill specifically, but other bills, engineering bill, whatever it is, to make sure that things look normal or look accountable. Yes, sir.
And we're certainly, that's why we're here tonight, for any suggestions on the treasurer position. I know the councils, it's important to them to define these duties, and we've made some suggestions, and all suggestions are open and welcome, so we'll certainly take that, write that down.
Well, that's one of the suggestions I'd like to make to Mr. Wilson, to add that to, before we do finalize this, to add that one item to it. Does anybody else have any items they'd like to add to? Pardon me?
I was just going to comment on the, we do, at staff meeting, generally, there'll be information. We have an agenda that the city manager puts together, so we know exactly what's there. We kind of come with our files, and we do a lot of, a lot of work gets done at the staff meeting and inquiries that have to be done. You know, the system, I will just share with you, in other communities, we actually maintain office hours at the municipality, which turns out to be more expensive than the phone calls, because we have to actually be physically present. But a lot of times, it's, they're very time-sensitive, and they can't wait till that Monday staff meeting. We've got things that come up, whether it's with litigation, contract reviews. We're going back and forth with various drafts of contracts, and we need input from the staff, or staff needs input from us. So, you know, I know that there's been a, certainly, and it's a limitation. I only deal with certain members of the staff. My office only deals with certain members. It hasn't been opened up, and in the past, under the previous manager, virtually every staff member had access to us, and we would take calls. The current city manager is limited, the, essentially, department heads are the ones that we, you know, we address. But those are, certainly, we'll be cognizant of those, but we have really made a concerted effort to try and be as efficient as possible.
I appreciate that, and then... Go ahead, Mr. Wesley.
And a comment about the phone calls and stuff, I think the city manager makes a fair judgment if he should call the attorney or not, and that's his job, so that's what we pay him for. So, I mean, I don't think you just call them just to say, hi, how are you, Pat?
No, but many of the calls are, as Pat, as Mr. Bond said, but many of the calls also were not directors of departments. And I'd like to sit down with Mr. Wilson and kind of go over some of them and see. It doesn't look like it's an emergency type of thing. It's things that could wait a week or two even. So something, that's an area that perhaps the treasurer can take care of. Any other comments? Yes, sir, miss, yes, ma'am. Alderman Winger.
Thank you. So the way I understand duty number three beyond the police pension board right now is a mayor does not have to appoint the treasurer. So in two thousand and thirteen, are we saying we would somehow draft our ordinances to ensure that the treasurer is appointed? I'm not sure how that would work.
Mr. Manager?
We're trying to figure that out. You know, the two city pension board members are both appointed by the mayor. They're mayoral appointees, and the next time one of them is due to be reappointed is in two thousand and thirteen. The other, I believe, is in two thousand and fourteen. So it'd really be up to, up to the mayor at that point. You know, should he choose, he or she, or the mayor maybe, decide to appoint or reappoint the treasurer back to that, or leave the two city appointees that are currently on there right now. So that's really a decision for the mayor. Mr. Bond has a comment.
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, I mean, if you, if you wanted it to be that person, then you would have to amend your code. That's not required at this juncture. But if you wanted to have the treasurer as a member of the police pension board, that would be a code amendment to accomplish that.
And Mr. Mayor?
And the only reason we had that second person was strictly because the previous treasurer declined the position, didn't want, did not want to do it. was strictly because the previous treasurer declined the position, didn't want, did not want to do it.
Now, you have the authority to disappoint somebody who doesn't go to the meetings?
Unfortunately, we didn't have that authority, so.
I know you don't have with elected officials, but with appointees, I would think the mayor can make that discretionary move. Mr. Bon?
Unless the code or the statute that authorizes the appointment specifically has a method for removal, they're entitled to what's called due process and you'd have to go through a procedure, essentially afford them a hearing to, to state their reasons why they were unable to discharge the duties of the appointment. But it doesn't just simply allow the mayor to rescind the appointment under the, under either the code, the city of Wooddale code or state statute. You would think he would have the power to, giveth, have the power to take it away. But there's a, that's true, but there's a process for doing that. And it's a hearing, a full-blown hearing essentially.
Mr. Mayor?
And actually, when the next person comes up, I believe is right after the next election, which is in April. I think the term, that person's term ends in May. And we did send that person to classes, is that correct, chief, for training? We had to send him for training. Whoever, whether the treasurer, and I think that's why the previous treasurer declined, did not have the time to go for training.
So do we want to make that part of the ordinance? So if somebody's going to run for treasurer, that they would have to take that training and attend the meetings? Do I have a consensus? Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I thought it was part of the ordinance that they had to sit on the board. I thought I remember reading somewhere, whether it was the city ordinance or statute or...
I think we need something, because out of forty-four cities surveyed, only three others have an elected treasurer. So if we're going to have one, we should have her, have that individual with responsibilities, especially if it's a paid position. So if I may make the recommendation, that staff go ahead and put together what they think would be reasonable. And go ahead, Mr. Wesley.
Questions to Pat. If they're elected official and they want, don't want to follow any of these rules, you're not, you can't force them to do it, just like we're elected officials up here. If we don't want to go, come to a meeting, we don't have to come to a meeting and vice versa. I mean, it's, what, I mean, you have a state rep that was booted out of the state and they got reelected again and they can't boot them out again. But what, I mean, you have rules, it doesn't matter. If an ordinance, if they don't want to file an ordinance and a selected official, what are you gonna do? Does due process? Is that how it's done?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you're right. I mean, the treasurer has specific duties set forth in section 2.403 of the city code and also of the Illinois Municipal Code, to the extent, section 3.135, 120, and a series of those. But you're right, if you have an elected official, the treasurer is no different than those of you sitting up here. If that elected official at all, at any level, elects not to discharge their statutory or their legal obligations and the ordinance is a legal obligation, there's, there's a process for removing those. You can seek to have them removed. That requires a court proceeding. And I will tell you, the courts say that's a matter for the electorate and not a matter for the courts. So it's very difficult to, to compel an elected official to fully discharge their duties and responsibilities under, under law.
Could I?
Mr. Wesley?
Pat, any towns you represent have a treasurer?
Uh, the, yes, one of them does, but after the April election, it's being eliminated. It was voted to be eliminated at the last election. There was a current treasurer occupying that position, so it couldn't end until the end of that term. So there is no, that city will no longer have a treasurer. And I think Mr. Wilson knows how many communities have treasurers and how many don't at this juncture. I think he had done a survey.
Yes, sir.
Do any of these towns that, that do have treasurer have duties, I mean, ordinance?
You say, do they have ordinances that the treasurers follow?
Of what their duties are? The same thing that we're trying to do here?
Yeah, I mean, I will admit that I did not dive too deep into the code of the municipalities that still have an elected treasurer. But I did talk to somebody in their finance department or in their administration department and got a list of, of their duties. And there's, there's not a lot, but defer back to Mr. Bon.
They do, but it's very broad, it's very general. It just says, you know, the receipt of money, I mean, it's got, you've got, you know, four specific ones that are set forth in your code. It's, it's very generalized. There are, there is a code provision that identifies that in those cities that still have treasurers, but it's a very broad grant of power. It doesn't get into the specifics of the duties of the treasurer or specific responsibilities of the treasurer. Just gives the broad, general authority under the municipal code.
Anything else? You have your recommendation? Alderman Winger?
Yeah, so, so I'd like to know firstly, does, is a mayor in concurrence with appointing or having a treasurer be appointed? Or at least having the option to be appointed at onset of being elected? And then secondly, is that what we want? You know, and Alderman very wisely brings up a good point, that this person could get appointed to the pension board and not even show up. So it's gotta be someone who wants it.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
When you said appointed, you're just talking about the pension board. You're not talking about the position itself.
Right, 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 sir.
Just wanna make sure you don't want me to appoint somebody.
Are you okay with that, if it was like an automatic appointment?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that at all. I'm actually trying to look in the code, because I know I was going through it. Did you find it, Aaron?
No, I, I was gonna respond to...
Alderman, Wes, go ahead.
Alderman Wesley here. I mean, that's a good point, but that point could be said about everybody here. Every Alderman, every mayor. We, we had one bad experience, you know, that shouldn't taint the pool, so to speak. So the next person, I would think, would know and want to perform the duties and not be shirk or shred that responsibility.
One more statement from Alderman Wesley.
I think anyone that runs for that position, or any Alderman that runs, I think they care about the city well enough that they will try to do their best in trying to make the city move forward and to help Brad out, to do, help, to learn more of that stuff too, as treasurer, what they're supposed to do. I, I think we're looking for problems if we give them an ordinance. They have to follow this and follow that. And then what we're going to do is come into arguments with, with other elected officials and stuff like that. And I say, just forget it. If, if the person running for treasurer, they care about the city and they're gonna watch the money, just like all of us up here, try to watch the money that's being spent the best that we can. So I don't, I think this is a waste.
Mr. Bon?
And the provision, there is not a provision specifically in the Wooddale City Code that, that requires the treasurer to serve in the capacity as a member of the police pension board. There is, under state guidelines, there's been recommended, here are some, some examples of the duties that the treasurers have performed. And I believe that was one of those duties, but that is not in your, currently in your city code.
Mr. Mayor?
Just, just to throw something out there, if we choose not to have, continue to have a treasurer, we do have, we do appoint a finance committee chairman every two years, I mean, and vice chair. That could be an option to be the watchdog if...
I think we had the discussion before though, and I think that that was voted down, that we did need to have a treasurer, if I'm not mistaken. So if we want to vote on that one more time, I'd be happy to. Would anybody like to make that a motion? Yes, sir, Mr. Wilson?
Just as a, a point of reference, I guess, every town still has a treasurer. Like, we still statutorily have to have a treasurer, somebody to sign, that has the title of treasurer to sign that. So the position of treasurer will never go away. It's just by once it, the person comes to be the treasurer.
But it's an oversight position. As I think Mr. Wood has said many times, he'd like to have somebody looking over our shoulder or looking over your shoulder, whoever's, to make sure things are running correctly. And in a way, I can't blame them, but I think we need a, a normal way of doing it or a written way of doing it, so that the treasurer will do it. I, I'm sorry to make a long thing out of this, but, go ahead, Mr. Wesley.
Yeah, they brought it up.
Are we gonna take a vote on this? Or are you just gonna give, as chairman, are you gonna want to vote on this? Or are you just making direction to staff?
Well, we were going to make direction to staff tonight as to the anti-fraud watchdog part of it, which what I was talking about would be a part of that, really, I think. So it's just a matter, I would believe, of the staff putting it together as they see fit and having the municipal lawyer look it over and make sure it's legal. And then we would be voting on it in the future meeting.
I just, again, I just think it's a waste of time. And if you're, if you're gonna call for a vote to do this ordinance, I'd like to call the question.
What's the question? Mr. Mayor?
I'm not sure what, what the motion is down there. I, I really, I don't know, does anybody?
I'm lost.
Did anybody hear a motion?
No, I didn't hear it. No, there wasn't one, but can I just interject?
The motion was put forward by Mr. Wilson, by staff, that the duties would include an anti-fraud watchdog and review monthly reports, surprise inspections, random sampling of the bills, regarding sampling a general letter, and regarding random sampling of payroll to ensure there are no, I don't know, any ghost employees. Of course, we wouldn't. Should we have that in the form of a motion, Mr. Woods?
Just one que, are, are we trying to make this part of the city ordinance? Or is this just gonna be a general guideline for the person taking the position as treasurer?
Mr. Manager?
Well, within the city code, it has a treasurer duty section, as well as a city clerk duty, city council duties. I think the idea was to revise the duties. I think the last time they revised were 1976, if I'm not mistaken. So take some of these ideas or whatever ideas you had as well and incorporate them into the code. That's why when we did mention formalizing the police pension board membership, we have to amend the code anyway, so.
So the recommendation tonight with Mr. Woods?
Well, to move forward, I'll make the motion to, to recommend staff's recommendations for the treasurer as a guideline.
Second.
Mr. Manager?
Just to clarify, duties one through four?
Yes, duties as presented.
Everybody understand that?
So it's, no.
Do we have a second to that motion?
We do.
Need a second?
My.
Okay, I think we'll call on that one.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
No.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
No.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
No.
Motion carries.
Can I? Is, is this going to the attorney?
This would be going to the attorney for his approval, right?
Correct. My understanding of the motion was to incorporate these into the code and clean it up, whatever, which would go to Attorney Bon and then back to you for final ratification. Just, I mean, this isn't gonna be done for next Thursday, so it's gonna be probably in one of the December meetings. But yeah, it is gonna certainly go to Pat first for vetting and clarification and all that.
Good. Settles. The next item is a report and recommendation again on taxes and bond issue. This was brought up by, I think, Alderman Winger.
Yep.
She learned some information from the IML. And we have some information back from the staff on it, Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Chairman, correct, Alderman Winger approached staff a week or so after the IML. And there was some talk of certain circles wanting to remove the tax exempt status from municipal bonds. And I could go through a forty-five minute argument about how that's bad and why it's bad, but it's bad. You know, we, as a double A municipality bonded out at 2.58 for a twenty-year term back in February. A similar corporate triple A bond, which are taxable issuance, back in February was issuing at about four percent, give or take. So obviously, the removal of the tax exempt status is going to be less attractive to investors, because then they're gonna have to pay taxes on it. And so they're gonna demand a higher interest rate to offset the fact that they have to pay taxes on their investments. So the tax exempt status allows municipalities, A, to issue more debt should they need, because the cost is lower, then it's also more attractive. And typically viewed, once you get above a certain rating, is more secure, which also allows the rate to be depressed a little bit. Which is why the government bonds, the triple A, federal government bonds, the interest is so low, because they've never defaulted, they've, you know, they're pristine, so that's why their rate is so low. Even a triple A corporation is a point, point and a half above that due to the implicit risk and the taxability of it. We did get a model resolution from the MMC by way of the IML that will be in the packet tomorrow, should you want to pass this resolution opposing removing the tax exempt status on bonds.
Alderman Winger? Anything?
Hey, I think Mr. Wilson did a great job articulating the concern and thank you for your work on it. And it looks like we'll have the model resolution to pass at council, should we approve it tonight, so, thank you.
So we don't need a recommendation today as such?
Oh, sure, then, I'd like to make that motion to move forward and adopt the resolution.
Oh, okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. That was a lot faster. As part of my duties as chairman of finance administration, I just would like to mention, in Wednesday's newspaper, The Herald, says, "Wooddale residents oppose video gambling. Roughly fifty-seven percent of the voters said the city should ban the machines." That's wrong for public knowledge. But I would like to just mention that this was a double entree type of question and very difficult to understand, even for the newspaper to understand. And I think the results would have been a lot different if it had been phrased more clearly. But it's done. It's done, it's over with, we are going ahead with it. So, Mr. Manager, if you wanted to make a comment?
I'll, I'll let the city attorney speak to the, why the language had to be worded that way. But I just want to let you know, staff did call The Herald to clarify that. And they did put a corrective notation in today's paper in two separate articles.
I did get a lot of comments from a number of seniors that just voted no, because they didn't want video gambling. They didn't realize that the question was a double negative or whatever you want to call it. So just for future issues, we'd like to have referendums or anything else in clear language. So just for future issues, we'd like to have referendums or anything else in clear language. Mr. Bond?
Well, I agree with you. It did, it was cumbersome, and a yes meant that it's, it's prohibited, but that's what the code requires. So you, if you deviate from the clear language of the code, it renders the, well, the question's invalid. So we're stuck with the language the state legislature gave us for that purpose. So we can't, you as a city cannot deviate from the statutory question that has to be presented to the voters.
What did Winfield do? Aren't they, didn't they turn it down, or they approved it, I forget which, but theirs was a clear statement of which, which way it should go? How could they do it if we can't?
I could look and see what Winfield did, but I'm not sure we might use that as the model, but they've had some other issues in Winfield, but, but the, the language is very clear, and if you recall, we did have this debate when it was presented for this discussion, because I know there were a number of the aldermen who were not, did not like the way the question was worded, and there is a specific provision in the Gaming Act that says, if you want to prohibit that, this is the language you have to put on the, on the ballot.
I, I hadn't realized that, and if I had, I would have tried to make some information put out to the residents about it. But it's done, it's over, there's nothing we can do about it. Items to be considered at future meetings. Number one, an audit presentation in November, property tax levy in November, six-month review of the FY two thousand and thirteen budget in November, going to be busy in November, DWC rate increase in December, property casualty discussion December, the CIP in January, and the budget for two thousand and fourteen and February two thousand and thirteen in February. Anything else? Anything else to be added? Mr. Bond?
I stand corrected, I do actually have. I have from the DuPage County Election Commission, the proposition questions, and the question that was on the Winfield ballot was identical to that on the, the Wooddale ballot.
I guess they get information out to the public. Anyway, it's done, it's, it's over, and there's no argument about it. That is, unless there's anything else to add, that concludes the November eighth meeting of the Finance and Administration Committee, that's a motion. If I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. I'll call the Public Works Committee, order, make the man take a same. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Joe, I'm sorry. Sorry, Joe.
I'm just, I, I realize, I came in late. I...
He's now second anyway.
Public Health and Safety and Judicial Committee, call the order. Roll call, everyone, it's the same as it was last time. Approval of the minutes of, of October eleventh, two thousand twelve. I make a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passed, all right. All right. Recommendation, report and recommendation on amendment to fifteen, ordinance fifteen two oh six. And this is about parking on the streets on Prospect, Potter, and Grove Street, on the east side of the street, and they have turned in a petition for all them streets from the neighbors, so the chief went out there and, I guess, talked to them, and I guess it's been approved by the police department. All will be?
Yeah, this is, I'm not sure, Prospect, Potter, and George, specifically near this residential house on the west side, and the townhouse on the east side. Probably comes into some of the residents, and see, we regularly do traffic calls over there, and speed enforcement details. That street is also a pretty common cut-through for commuting traffic, which we, we've all been aware of for a while. Anyways, over the last couple of years, we have had a couple of serious accidents over there, where vehicles that were parked on the west side of the street were struck by moving vehicles. There were arrests out of both of those cases, but regardless, with parking on both sides of the street, it does kind of restrict flow for a, for a high-traffic street. One of the residents circulated a petition over there. One of them dealt with speed humps, which we're going to address after the winter season, because it's really not practical to do now. But the parking, based on that petition, the city's, the Public Works Department sent out a survey as they normally would, and twenty-one out of twenty-two people that responded to the city survey said that they wanted no parking on the west side of the street. The actual petition that was circulated that I think everyone should have a copy of, there was even more of the residents that responded, but to the official city survey, twenty-one out of twenty-two wanted to restrict parking, and that includes residents that are on the west side of the street. So this would be something similar to, that we do over in Ward Four, with the restricting parking to one side of the street. For this stretch of roadway, I think it would be appropriate to do so, because you do get a lot of commuter traffic that comes through, and if you've been down there when cars are parked on both sides of the street, there's a lot of zigging and zagging going on, so, you know, this was really driven by citizens wanting it, but we are in support of it and would recommend that we amend the ordinance.
Yeah, I've been down there in wintertime also, and when the snow gets plowed in there, it's pretty bad. So I would definitely go and second your motion there.
Ms. Winger?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve an amendment to city ordinance fifteen that two zero zero six, to prohibit parking on the west side of Prospect Avenue from Potter Street, Street to George Street.
We already made a motion.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. I'll second your motion. Oh, somebody's been seconding it, go ahead, okay, it's done.
Left side's not awake today.
Mr., Mr. Woods?
Thank you. Of the twenty-two, how many people in all are on Prospect? How many people did they survey? How many properties involved?
Oh, you know what, I, I had that listed out, I think it's in the low to mid forties. That would include the houses that are on the west side, and then we surveyed all of the townhouses that are on, that have residences, doors that face the, the east side of the street there. I provided a list of Public Works, and I think it was in the low forties, so we received twenty-two surveys back.
And of the twenty-two surveys, how many, do we know, how many were on the west side and how many were on the east side? I mean, if we're going to eliminate parking on one side?
Sure.
I'm looking at who's, you know, is the west side calling the shot for the east side?
Yeah, I, I don't have the information with me, but on the...
Not in Japan.
On the petition, this was driven by the residents on the west side of the street, and other, on the petition, the first, the first two pages are all people that live on the west side.
All right, excellent, thank you.
I can come back with that for the next meeting if you want.
No, that's fine.
Anybody else got a question? Let's take a vote on this, would you, please?
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Lazaro?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
Yes.
Alderman Coles?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Okay. All right, items to be considered at future meetings. Anybody got anything that they wanted to say? All right, the mayor?
Regarding the, are you going to talk, you know what?
Go ahead, that's, that's fine.
I talked to the chief today, if, with this video gaming coming in, talked about penalties and whatnot, and setting the ordinance, and actually a couple other things, talked to him about the possibility of, no, any, anybody with a liquor license, and I think I have a model still at home, can't donate to campaigns, this way there's no nonsense going on, trying to get liquor licenses and whatnot. Campaign contributions to, to the liquor commissioner or elected officials. Believe me, I've getting all kinds of calls from people that want, want liquor licenses, all kinds of, I'm telling them, we don't have any open.
What's the bid up to?
And we discussed today, and I think the goal was to discuss with the city attorney some options for, if we do have a violation of underage gambling in one of these establishments, do, you know, where would it be appropriate to list that as a, as a specific violation, and should we add an addendum to the city code, or the liquor code, that specifically for that first violation sets a fine amount substantially higher, whereas with liquor license violations, there's a lot more discretion on the, on the behalf of the liquor commissioner. And then this would be longstanding as part of code that, you know, even with changes in political offices down the road, it all stays consistent for the, for the...